Good evening, everyone. Oh, thank you so much for coming. This is our first town hall. Give yourselves a round of applause for coming out. It's our first town hall for the new year and we really thank you for joining us. I just want to, you know, give credit to our leadership, Councilman Roger Gay and our First Lady, Mrs. Pamela Gay, here. And I also want to acknowledge all of our elected officials. If we have some sitting in the audience, can you stand up? Well, thank you very much for your service. We appreciate you for being here. We have a full agenda tonight. Let's continue with our opening remarks from our Mrs. Ward 4, Mahersela Howard. Is she here?
She's here.
Right on time, exactly.
Hello, Ward 4, and welcome to our Ward 4 meeting with Councilman Gay and First Lady. First, I want to say thank you, Councilman Gay and First Lady, for, um, left my crown in the truck, but for crowning me for Ms. Ward 4 for this year. And I can't wait to see who's going to be the next Ms. Ward 4. And I want to say tonight, we're going to bring all of our questions and concerns that we may have for Ward 4 to Councilman Gay and have a happy new year. Sorry I'm late, but I'm not.
Alright, thank you.
I'm so excited to be here and support this community. I'm so excited to hear about y'all's agenda and everything that y'all have planned for all of us. And if you have any questions or concerns, please direct it to him. But also, you just want to know more about the Miss America Program, who I'm also here representing. I'm also here to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, so, sorry. Brother, it's okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. We shall have our prayer now by Pastor John. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay and First Lady, for inviting me to your town hall meeting. And it's always a joy for me to be among the community. I came up, the community raised me. The community raised me in the City Hall of Atlanta, Fulton County, and other cities. But I'm also a minister of the gospel of Jesus Christ, and at this time, let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we've come here tonight, Father, to do your will among the community for the people. Everything is geared toward the community. Everything begins at the community level, whether it's in the political arena, economic development, whatever the things that occur in a community, it has to be covered with prayer. And we are covering right now, God, all of the things that are being done in this community and all of the things that are being done by the Councilmember Gay and his ward. And we ask, God, that you would bless the people that live in this ward. Bless those who have, bless those who have not, bless those who need to be in a covenant relationship with you, God. We ask this prayer in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor John. As all of you know, our goal here in the City of College Park is to lead our residents to homeownership. And our city consists of more than 70% of renters. However, our population also has legacy residents who outright own their homes. So how do you go about managing that equity that's in your home? And I am so grateful and pleased to introduce our community partner. Her name is Mrs. Janine Hunter, and she's the Assistant Vice President of Community Lending, Mortgage Lending, with United Community Bank. So let's welcome her and give her a well-welcome. Thank you.
To Councilman Gay, First Lady Gay, all elected officials, my good partner in crime, Ms. Alyssa Jefferson. United Community Bank is a community partner for the City of College Park as well as Fulton County. And as Ms. Jefferson stated, we have a large population here of renters. And one thing that we know about homeownership is that currently in the African-American community, the homeownership rate sits at 44%. For the majority community, it is approximately 70%. So that means we have a lot of work to do, community. And one of the things that United Community Bank is excited about is the fact that we have a program called PATH. And what this program does is it allows you to purchase a home with no down payment. And we know that for many communities of color, down payment, closing costs, and credit is many of the obstacles that prevents homeownership. So this program takes away a majority of those obstacles. We will work with you. So if you have a 640 credit score, or if you have no credit score, we're going to use your rent, we're going to use your cell phone bill, we're going to use your car insurance, anything that you pay monthly, we're going to utilize that in order to establish credit for you. This program does go up to $726,000, so that does mean that you're not going to be living in the hood. And that is one of the things that many of the people ask when they ask about the criteria for their program. In order to qualify for the program, the house has to be located in a low to moderate census tract or in a majority-minority neighborhood. And the City of College Park fits either one of those two categories, either low to moderate census tract or majority-minority. The great thing about this program is that if you have not owned a home in the last three years and you fit the income guidelines, we can then layer $12,500 if you're a first-time homebuyer. And if you are a medical professional, educational professional, first responder, or vet, we can layer $15,000 on top of that program. So what does that mean? That means that literally you can get into a house with no money out of pocket if we structure it right. So that's why we are so excited to be a community partner with the City of College Park, because we know that once we are able to add more homeownership opportunities for the citizens, that will then open up more opportunities for commercial development as well as new residents into the area. Another thing I want to focus on, too, is that because we are a bank, we have what is called a minimum loan limit, and that is $50,000. So I know for a lot of people, especially my seniors, who may need some home improvements, who may want to do some debt consolidation, we can help you out. There is no reason why any senior should lose their home due to property taxes. There are resources out there to help you, and your equity is one of those resources. So if you have any questions or concerns, I will be here. I have packets related to the program. I am also a HUD-certified housing counselor, so I will be able to help you with budgeting as well as credit counseling. And again, let's go out and let's become homeowners. Thank you. On the flyer that you received when you came in today, there was a homebuyer workshop that was scheduled for March 18th. Due to scheduling conflicts, we are going to reschedule that for March 25th. So if you reach out and register on the QR code, I will get your information and I will call you directly with the details for the rescheduled date of March 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Definitely, as community, let's exercise our financing options when it comes to us, you know, owning our homes. And the reason why I just adore Ms. Hunter is because she leads with education. She's really trying to educate the community on what your options are. So please contact her, set up an appointment, and come out to the homebuyer seminar on March 25th. Next, we have our newly-elected Chief Connie Rogers. You know, we support our College Park Police Department. Thank you. Let's give her a well-welcome.
Councilman Gay, First Lady, thank you for the opportunity to speak to Ward 4 residents this evening. My name, again, is Connie Rogers. I'm originally from Alabama. I have over 24 years of law enforcement experience, either military or peace officer. I spent eight years in the U.S. Army. So service has been embedded in me from an early age. And for, when I transitioned from the military into law enforcement, it was a smooth transition. Law enforcement, for me, is about service. Every resident or visitor that comes in or live in College Park, I want you to always feel like you're getting the service that you deserve from the College Park Police Department. That's what we here for. I serve the police department and you all. And it struggles down from there. The entire police department serves you, you all. So if you ever feel like you're not getting the services you deserve, I have an open-door policy. I'm going to leave business cards at the table as you walk out. Feel free to take one, give me a call, come up, even if you want to just say hello, you're in the area, let's have a conversation about what we can do in the police department to make this community much better. My vision for the police department and the community as a whole is to get away from that negative stigma of College Park. And we all know what I'm talking about. When you're out in Atlanta or other parts of Georgia, and when people use, people say "College Park," we all know what they say. My job as the chief is to, I want to change that stigma of how people see College Park. And that starts every day with the services that we give in the police department. I'm not going to take up too much of Councilman Gay's agenda. I will be in the lobby. If anyone has a concern that they want to discuss with me one-on-one, feel free to come out and let's talk about it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. I think City of College Park, we are so blessed to have a community relationship with our police department. And, you know, as our late congressman always would say, "When you see something, say something." You know, there's a such thing called "good trouble." So let's keep our relationship with our City of College Park, let's keep it close. And if you see something, say something, contact them accordingly. Next, we're going to move on to our major topic, which is our Senior Tax Bill and our -- oh, you're going, okay. Okay, sorry about that. We're going to go on to our, receive our information on our Medicare health services under GIN Care.
Thank you, Councilman Gay, First Lady, for inviting us out to be a part of this town hall. My name is Terrence. This is my colleague, Mr. Eric McMillan. And we actually have one of our esteemed doctors here, Dr. Gettmer. At GIN Care, we represent a primary care provider dedicated to serving seniors 55 or better. Usually, I like to walk around, so y'all got to excuse me if I seem a little -- right here. How about that? Is that good? My man. All right. I'm usually taking the mic, walking around, so y'all got to excuse me if I feel a little stiff at the podium. However, there are usually three main topics that I like to touch on, and I'll let my doctor and my esteemed colleague, she's going to here, give you their deal as far as what GIN Care does. At GIN Care, we provide VIP service. Three services that I wanted to mention, the first one is, we provide door-to-doctor transportation, okay? Some of our seniors still drive, but some don't. And even if you do, okay, it may be a day that you don't want to drive, we actually will pick you up for your appointments, all of your appointments, and take you back to your home, okay? So if you don't feel like driving, or if you don't drive, we consider that a VIP service for you. The other service that we have is medication distribution, okay? And this is huge for a lot of our seniors, especially if they don't drive. But I, like myself and others, once you go to the doctor, if you have medications, you got to go to Walgreens, you got to go to CVS, or, you know, Walmart or something like that. Where at GIN Care, we actually have in-house medication distribution. So when you come in for your appointment and you have medication, you leave out with your medication in hand. So that eliminates you having to go to the Walgreens and CVS and the other drugstores to name. The third, and I deem most important, is the relationship, okay? And Dr. Gettmer will be able to speak more to it. And as a matter of fact, we did have, actually, a member in here kind of gave us a testimony walking in the door. But the relationship that we have with our doctors. Our relationship with our doctors, or the patients, should I say, relationship with our doctors, is very important. And we're able to establish that relationship simply because of our patient panel. Like the hospitals, Emory and Piedmont and all the other big hospitals, they usually have about 2,000, maybe 4,000 patients. I don't care who you are, to manage that many people on your panel, you're not going to be able to see them but once a year, which is why you see your doctor once a year, maybe twice if you're lucky. Where at GIN Care, we see our patients monthly. Now, that depends on the plan of care. It could be in-person or TOV. However, our patient panel is cut off at 450. As a matter of fact, most of our doctors don't even have 400 on their panel. So what does that mean? That means we're able to spend more time with you. That means we're able to listen to your needs and serve you in the capacity of your needs and wants, okay? So that right there is really, really important, and we deem to be VIP service. So much so, that you get your doctor's personal cell phone number, okay? I don't know about y'all, I've never had my doctor's personal cell phone number. If you call your doctor and they don't respond to you, they will respond to you within 24 hours. And usually, it's because they're either with a patient, and even after hours, they answer. So those three things, I will leave, because I don't want to steal the show from everybody, I deem to be the VIP service. So I'll let Mr. -- oh, you want Doc. Go first? Okay. Dr. Gettmer. And as I introduce her, she came on to the practice with us. And you know, some people just come with a light that they carry. They're real subtle, they're real nice, you just, they give that great energy. Well, Dr. Gettmer has that. And I don't say that for myself, these are testimonials that comes from our patients. So without further ado, because I don't want to take up too much of your time, Dr. Gettmer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. Like he said, my name's Dr. Austin Gettmer. Most of my patients just call me Dr. Austin, because it's easier to remember. And when somebody asks who your doctor is, they can say Dr. Austin. I've been with the practice for almost a year and a half now. And I wanted to kind of tell you guys why I chose GIN Care, to give you an idea of what I think is so valuable for the patients at a practice. And in the same way that Terrence said, that there are kind of three big money things for our services and care that we provide, for our services and care that we provide, there are really two big things that I saw when I interviewed, that I said, "This is what I want." The first one being, my patients have access to me at all times. And the second one being, that cost does not limit my ability to care for my patients and provide them with the best care. So going back to access, like Terrence said, I see all of my patients at least once a month. Some patients who are sicker, I see every two weeks. And they're even patients who are ill and don't want to go to the hospital. I can see them every single day, and they don't have a co-pay to see me. I can get an Uber to bring them to and from the clinic. And I can even have my case managers come out to the house for them. So there's nothing that limits, not transportation, not cost, not time, that limits my ability to care for my patients. The second one being cost. So like I said, there's no co-pay to see me. If you came and saw me Monday through Friday, there would be no cost. I'm also able to provide medications for free to my patients. Like Terrence was saying, transportation can be a problem, but also just, for some seniors, getting out of the house is a big ordeal. So if you're able to get everything done sort of one-stop shopping, that's the best opportunity for you. Terrence sort of summarized everything else pretty eloquently, so I'm going to let Eric kind of go on. But we'll be there out front afterwards to answer any questions you guys might have. And again, thank you for having us.
My name is Eric McMillan. I've been with the company for about six months now. And I'm going to give you my perspective from an outsider coming into an organization that, I'm going to give you my vision. And what I see is I see patients coming in, and it's more than just primary care. It's more than coming and getting your heart checked, getting your lab work, getting results, getting your medications. These people come in, they have a good a time at GIN Care, okay? When it's Christmas, Thanksgiving, or it's the March month birthdays, anybody's got a birthday, the whole front lobby is like decorated, and it's like a festive event. Sometimes it's even catered with food. Our patients, I'd never seen a patient come in for a doctor's appointment and then walk out with a bag of something. One, it could be their prescriptions. Two, it could be a bag of snacks, healthy snacks. It could be a GIN Care shirt, a GIN Care hat, a GIN Care fanny pack, which we have some out on the table out there for you. But it just, it produces a very festive and great experience for seniors. You know, both my parents are 85 years old, and, you know, their health is declining a little bit, and I see them slowing down a lot a bit. And, you know, it's time for me to intervene. But, you know, for me, working this job, it kind of gives me the perspective of what I need to do for my own parents. And if my parents lived here in the state of Georgia, I would highly recommend that they be a part of GIN Care, because of the care and the love and the passion that the people within the facility bestow upon the patients. It's phenomenal. It's phenomenal, you know? And I love what I do. I'm in the healthcare business. I love to help, you know, with patients. And I'm accustomed to working with doctors. As a matter of fact, I used to call on Dr. Gettmer's father when he was at Crawford Long. You know, I have a background in medical sales and pharmaceutical sales, and, you know, I'm in, I know I'm in the right place. And I know these patients are in the right place. And to give you another example, these patients come in, they play cards, they play spades, bidwits, Uno, we have bingo, we give away prizes, you know, to them. So like I said, they always leaving with something. It's more than just primary care. But primary care is first, because we want you to be healthy, so you can come in and receive some of these goodies that we got for you. So, you know, that's my perspective. You know, I'm proud to be associated with GIN Care, and we are in the community. We're looking for Medicare-eligible patients. Medicare-eligible, meaning the red, white, and blue card. You got to have the red, white, and blue Medicare card, as well as a Medicare Advantage Plan, like a Humana, Edna, Cigna, WellCare, United anthem, okay? I know I was missing one. So you got to have both, okay? We don't just see the Medicare patient. If a patient has Medicaid, you know, partial Medicaid, Medicare, you're still good to go, okay? And as far as the cost, you know, GIN Care patients don't, they don't, they don't, they don't spend money, just like Dr. Gettmer said. You know, they get their prescriptions and they're walking out the door. Everything's IRE. IRE is a Jamaican word, meaning "good," okay? So if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, we'd be happy to speak with you. We'll be located out back. I have some information. We have six locations. Hammond Park is a, Hammond Park is a new location, which Hammond Park is now on the corner of Cleveland Metropolitan, okay? We got an office in East Point, we got one in Morrow, Forest Park as well, it's a brand-new one, the West End and South DeKalb. So we're all over the place, and we're growing real, real fast. So any questions, concerns, or comments, it may not be for you right now, but you may know somebody who may be Medicare-eligible, and you can possibly tell them about GIN Care, maybe pick up a flyer and hand it to them, and tell them to look into it. Appreciate your time. Thank you. And I was just instructed, one last thing, too. For those of the online, go to our website, and even those here in the audience, and you will see the experience, the things that Mr. McMillan was just talking about. I've never been in a doctor's office in the lobby. We don't wait 15 minutes, that's another thing we do, but it's unlike anything else. It's a total experience for our seniors. So we really honor them, but thank you all for your time.
I think we could do better than that. That was excellent. As we know, our health and self-care is our wealth. Now, we shall lead into our very serious topic that's going to be impacting our community soon, which is our Senior Tax Bill. And our Director of Finance with the City of College Park, Mrs. Athia Felord Bradley, as well as Philip Latoya, is here. Thank you.
As Ms. Jefferson stated, my name is Athia Felord Bradley. I am the Director of Finance and Accounting for the City of College Park. In addition to that, I also oversee the Departments of Customer Service, Property Tax Administration, Purchasing, and the Accounting Department, of course. And today, well, actually, I've been with the city, let me tell you how long I've been with the city. I've been with the city going on five years. I'm originally from Florida, and I'm here because of my old Elvis daughter, who attended Spelman, so we all just decided to relocate here. So happy to be here, been here with the City of College Park, like I said, be five years in July. I will let Philip Latona, who is the Tax Administrator, take the lead on this item, and I will basically support him with whatever questions that he may, that you all may have. Before we get started, did everybody get a fact sheet? If you don't have one, raise your hand, because it was at the front table. So I'll walk around while he's speaking, give me about five minutes to distribute these items.
Again, I'm Philip Latona, Property Tax Accountant for the City of College Park, here to talk about the Senior Homestead Exemption, which is near and dear to our residents of College Park. Just a brief overview, the homestead exemption that we currently have goes to great lengths to keep College Park affordable, an affordable place to live and to raise a family. Currently, it provides all residents $40,000 of assessment value, but it currently does not have an age or income requirement. Through the leadership of Councilman Gay and the rest of the city leadership, we put forth a Senior Homestead Exemption, which is now going to be able to affect all those residents who are homestead recipients, 65 years or older, who have an income of $40,000, $40,140, or for a couple, $80,000, $280,000, a full exemption on their city taxes. So they'd pay no city taxes. Let's see. Our Senior Homestead Exemption also has an exemption category for those who are disabled. For a permanent disability, 65 years or older, For a permanent disability, sixty-five years or older as well, same income requirements, forty thousand one forty for an individual. Or there is a caveat, if your disability has to do with being blind, it's fifty-five years minimum age or older, and you can qualify for a full exemption. Basic eligibility requirements would require the resident to be a homestead recipient, property owner as of January first, twenty twenty-three. Now, if you just recently purchased the home in twenty twenty-two, you would be the owner of record as of January first, twenty twenty-three. But you need to file your homestead exemption by April first with the local county. Now, City of College Park is in two separate counties. We're in Fulton County and Clayton County, so just know what side of College Park that you're on, or you can call my office, and I can help direct you to the local county office, where you can file your homestead and then become eligible for the Senior Homestead Exemption. Let's see. So basic eligibility would be that you have to be sixty-five years of age or older as of January first. You must be a qualified senior owner of the property, and you must be a basic homestead recipient already. Let's see what else. Income requirements, we are using the... Okay. You can't hear me? Okay, sorry. So basic income requirements will be that we are using the... What is this, FRA? Yeah, Social Security. Yeah, Soc...
I'm sorry. So basically, what happens is we're just using the Social Security Administration as a threshold, which will require, as far as the minimum income limit, you, as an individual, the max that you can make on Social Security is about forty thousand one hundred and forty dollars. So if an individual is filing, if they're sixty-five and older, they're filing, that income eligibility requirement, you have to make below the forty thousand one forty for a single person. Now, if that person is married, then it doubles to eighty thousand two eighty.
Yes, thank you. So that income requirement is for a regular Senior Homestead Exemption. It is for the disabled homestead exemption and for the blind Senior Homestead Exemption. Another requirement is we're going to actually have to have proof of identity. So you will have to have a driver's license to show proof of age. And then for the income requirement, we are requiring not so much your tax returns, but a tax transcript. And that you can get from the Internal Revenue Service, especially if you file. If you don't file, you can get a document from them showing that you don't have to file. You don't meet the income requirements to file. And I think the income verification will be done on an annual basis, so that we can just make sure that no one's income is changing. Let me see what else is on here. The eligibility requirements for the disabled homestead, Senior Homes exemption have one extra caveat. So for the full disability, you will need to provide us with two certified doctor's notes to state that you're fully disabled. And you will have to also have a doctor's certification on your disability for being blind. And I think we will have residents come in. Once this does pass, citizens will have to vote on this homestead exemption. Once it passes, then we'll start accepting applications to put you into the Senior Homestead Exemption Program. And then you'll have a full exemption on city taxes, which would take place, expected to take place in October, November, when we do our twenty twenty-three billings. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
We have a mic. An extra mic.
My office is in City Hall. I will leave business cards on the back table, so that you guys can contact me. Absolutely. If anyone has a question, yes, ma'am. That's for a couple? So if one per... They would still maintain their basic homestead exemption, which currently saves about five hundred and forty-four dollars. Yes, but you would have to... The homestead exemption typically is for an individual, so depending on how the ownership is worthed, i.e. in a trust, would be determined by the county if they allow you to have it. Because we are piggybacking off of the county's program, so to speak. It's not established by us. So just find that out. But typically, homeownership would be an individual. But I do know people, for business purposes, may put it in a trust, may put it in a LLC. Those would have potential impacts on your eligibility. Anybody else have any questions? Yes. It's... No, yes. The Senior Homestead by the county is separate and distinct from College Park. So once the citizens vote on this, and this, I guess, referendum passes, then you will have to come into College Park to just fill out the application, so that we can A verify age and then income. So it is separate. Any other questions? I'm gonna leave my business cards in the back, so if anyone has questions that they may think of, feel free to call the office, or stop into City Hall. I'm usually in every day, eight to five, and be more than happy to speak with you. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Let's thank them again. Also, I know this is a new initiative for our city, so definitely, I know questions may come up. Please keep the pamphlet that they have provided with the overall information. And then, like they said, if you have any further questions, please reach out to them directly. Next, we have, you know, this city, it takes a village to get development and projects done in our city. And so our Councilman Gay has appointees that they have appointed to several boards throughout our city. And now, we'll take the time to hear from each of our board appointee members. Thank you.
We're gonna have a slight deviation in that. We're gonna let Councilmember Joe Carr come and join us. Joe has been a tremendous asset to the city since he's been back from Fulton County. He's doing some amazing work over in the BIDA, eighteen acres, so we're just honored to have him here.
All right, how's everybody? Good to see everybody back. Y'all doing all right? Great, great. I always try to come to all of the community meetings. You know, we've got wards, Ward one, two, three, four. It's one city, y'all. There're just lines. Somebody drew. We got the same concerns on one side of the street and this side of the neighborhood than we do on the other side. It's good to see everybody again, and we are working hard, trying to get things together for the community. Most of y'all know me, and you know that I'm about the business of representing the people. And I'm also about the business of expressing y'all's concerns on behalf of you all on council, setting some policy. We're looking forward to some great changes in the community. We are gonna be raising the bar in terms of expectations of service. You pay your taxes for decent and good services, and we do pretty good. But we can do a whole lot better, and we have all committed to doing a whole lot better. If you watched the council meeting, the last one, we all, well, almost all of us, committed to doing a whole lot better. So we're definitely gonna do that. Always say what Roger, reward for. We're neighbors. So in a sense, you got two council members representing, you always like to say, because I don't just look out for my community's interests, I'm looking out for y'all's interests as well. So again, looking forward to some good things, and we're gonna be moving forward. Our new city manager, I'm sure someone mentioned, is gonna be starting in April. So we're looking forward to that, and he's gonna get in, hitting the ground running. And we're excited to have him on board coming in April as well. So that's all I got. I'm not gonna run my mouth too much longer, because I know there's some other folks coming up here. So thank y'all so much. Glad to see everybody.
Many of you all know me. My name is Whitney Flemminster, resident on Williamsburg, the Ward Four Planning Commissioner. And I just want to bring you guys this evening a couple of updates as it pertains to planning, zoning, things of that nature. As you know, Rockland Homes has been completed. That was a long extenuating process, but they are up. We had a grand opening. There are several homes that have been sold, some under contract, and they're continuing to develop that project. So that is one new and good thing. Also, we've had a new applicant on another townhome project, which will be... I guess I'm too loud. Everybody else wasn't loud enough, and I'm too loud. So there's a new townhome slash condo community that hopefully will also be on Herschel. It's a little bit of a higher price point. They're looking to be in the five to seven hundred thousands. There's only gonna be about, I believe, seventeen units. They have a partnership. It's a private venture in collaboration with Berkshire Hathaway. It's a very nice project, rear-entry garages, three-two, which is three bedroom, two bath, or also could be four bed, four bath. These projects, again, some of what was mentioned earlier, trying to increase homeownership in College Park. A lot of things that people want, you have to have a lot more homeownership, the grocery stores, the shopping plazas, and things of that nature. And so that particular project, in conjunction with Rockland, and in conjunction with some of the other home developments that are taking place in other parts of College Park, also in this tri-city area, as you can see, East Pointe, Haightville, they're the Air Tropolis Project of Airport City. So there are a lot of things going on in College Park. And I know some of you are, especially seniors, concerned with increasing property values and things of that nature as it pertains to taxes. And that was why, one of the reasons Councilman Gay had some of the officials come, or employees come from the Tax Department, to discuss those things with you. Because of course, we want our home values to increase and you to gain equity, but we don't want to price you out of your homes where you can no longer live in it. So I advise people, as I'm a social worker, to put your home in a trust. If you're a senior, protect your assets. That's the best thing to do. But until that time, please take advantage of the tax advantages that will be coming to the city. Also, the splash pad, that was a long process. That's one of the projects that we've worked on. And of course, you can see it, that's come to fruition. Another, in reference to the part, other things that we want to continue to work on and improve in that part, because it is the most utilized in the city, is the playground. So they did replace pieces to that, but we will be working on having the Recreation Department and those representatives work a little bit harder to renovate and completely replace all that playground equipment, as we want safe play areas, as we continue to attract more people to the City of College Park. If you guys have any questions or concerns about different community developments that are coming to the city, any issues that you feel that would impede on your, or infringe on your life, quality of life, please let us know. I feel like we've done a fairly decent job at trying to block out things that we don't want and bring in things that would be an asset to our community. College Park is a great place to live, and I appreciate working with Councilman Gay, First Lady Gay, and Ms. Jefferson, and other board appointees, as we continue to work together to make College Park a great city. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so I represent, my name is Melissa Jefferson. I'm the newly-elected chairperson for our BIDA Board. BIDA means Business and Industrial Development Authority Board. Although I am not privy to discuss the exact developments that we are working on in the city, just know that our city is moving forward with numerous developments to improve your quality of life for the City of College Park. BIDA, we work very in conjunction with the mayor and council. And so we provide, our board consists of several members, and we really provide that community input and really collaborate together, so that we're looking out for the general welfare of our community to improve our quality of living. If you should have any questions, you can reach out to me directly. My email is posted on the website accordingly. And then, or you can see me after our meeting this evening at the reception. Thank you. We shall hear from our next board appointee for Main Street Board, Mr. Vincent Mincy.
Good evening, neighbors. I am a Ward Four resident, also a College Park business owner, and I'm appointed to the Main Street Board by Councilman Gay. On the Main Street Board, we oversee the part of Main Street that runs from pretty much Rugby down to Camp Creek. So it's not necessarily in Ward Four, but on the board, we actually working on doing things for its beautification, putting up different murals about Keep College Park Beautiful, bike stations, where you can actually pump, fix your bikes as you go. And being that I'm a Ward Four resident, looking to bring that to Ward Four as well. So we've been looking at doing something beside that with Councilman, that'll be at Herschel, that'll actually be a workstation for bikes, and as well as an area to rest. So bringing the beautification to Ward Four is pretty important to me as a resident there. So I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good afternoon, neighbors. My name is Charles Jefferson. I'm your Vice Chair of Keeping College Park Beautiful, appointed by Councilman Gay here. We just, last week, we just been certified through the state with qualifying for all requirements to be qualified by the state to do our mission in College Park, which is to get the whole city beautiful. And starting this week, well, starting next week, Saturday the twenty-fifth, we have a citywide cleanup. And with that cleanup, we're looking for volunteers. And it's gonna be exciting. We're gonna start off at Charles Phillips Park. We're gonna, nine AM, from nine AM to twelve, we're gonna have a cleanup to clean up our beautiful park. And if you know of anybody, or if you yourself want to volunteer to clean up, I have handouts out front. You may have seen them. Just pick one up. It has all my contact information on it. And I look forward to hearing and seeing you out there on Saturday. Also, we have some projects that we're planning on doing for the month of March and in April. A few things here. We're gonna... We're gonna start off April 4th, we're gonna have students of the community mark storm drains throughout the city from 10:00 AM to noon. On April 15th, we have a house solar energy project of our earth with this presentation by Pete Martyr, President of Hannah Solar, followed by walk tour, walking tour on solar locations in the area and then a return to the park for a reception. On April 20th, which is a Thursday, we have a litter law enforcement workshop. The workshop is designed, okay, it's designed for all responsible for enforcing and maintaining property free of litter. It will review litter laws. Code enforcement officers will receive continuing education credits. On April 22nd, we have Family Day at City Hall. And they're gonna have face painting, games, et cetera, and they're gonna also have an ice cream truck. So, if you have kids, come on out on April 27th, 22nd, which is on a Saturday for Earth Day. And that's gonna be it. So, if you want to be involved, it takes a village. So, let's come out together and let's have fun on next Saturday out at Charles Phillips Park. Thank you.
We're doing good in time. We'll be done here shortly. And before we bring up our next speaker, we have a lot of food out there. I need a favor. Please, everybody, take as much food as you can. But Chief, you gonna come on up, please? I see you here. Fire Chief Wade Elmore does an amazing job. And we also have a planning and zoning interim director, hopefully. Mr. Prentis, when you come to College Park, Chief, you have a few words and then we're gonna let, talk about some amazing things we're doing this summer or this spring and summer, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Councilman Gay, First Lady, thank you for having me. I didn't know, I just wanted to say anything tonight, but I'm here. Just to give an update on our fire department and the EMS transport that we've been having some issues with over the last year and a half. As you know, over the last year and a half, the transport units that's responsible for transporting patients to, from the house if they're having a medical emergency to the hospitals, we've been having a delay. That delay has been anywhere from 45 minutes to, I would say, an hour and a half. Now, when you dial 911, our units get on scene within five, six minutes. We're there treating the patients, but we have to wait for an ambulance to come and transport the patients. Like I said, over the last year and a half, we've been having some issues with delayed responses. But over the last month, maybe month and a half, those responses have improved. I know all of the fire chiefs in South Fulton County has been meeting on a monthly basis. And we have gone down to the Capitol and spoke to some of the senators. And I think that has helped with improvement of the patients being transported in a timely manner. But that's one of the good things that I wanted to share with everyone. As you know, we're, we are a department. We have three fire stations. We have a total of 74 positions within our fire department. And all of our firefighters are certified as EMTs or paramedics. So, we can provide the same service as an ambulance can, but it's just right now, we cannot transport. Our goal is hopefully within the next couple of years, we'll get into the transport business where we'll be able to transport. And that is something that we're striving for. That is the update I have for the fire department. And thank you all for having me.
We have a few things coming on this spring and summer. We have Ms. Jill, you wanna come on up real quick? And she's actually gonna be doing two projects. She's working with Soccer in the Streets. You see all those people over at the BIDA lot as well as the Community Garden. And if you look at your program, there's some out, we have a lot of the information on the back. But just before she comes up, I just wanted to tell you briefly that we do have a development. And because it's already been out, I can talk about it, but we're looking to get a $12 million facility at the 18 acres. It's gonna be to semi volleyball. Now, I guess you say, well, we don't play volleyball, but actually, there's a lot of families in Ward Four and Two, as well as citywide, who have children. But the amazing thing about this facility, it's gonna have a thousand, it's planned to have 1,000 feet of flex space for our seniors. So, our seniors can go into the facility and enjoy themselves as their, our younger community enjoy volleyball. And one last thing, amazing scholarships are coming out of volleyball now. So, volleyball and soccer is now big in addition to other sports. So, Jill, if you'll talk briefly about Soccer in the Streets and the garden.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. I've been with Soccer in the Streets in College Park. We've been partner with College Park for over 15 years. And now, I'm watching kids that were four and five years old now going to college. So, it's really exciting to see the kids grow up and do some amazing things as young adults. I just took a few notes so I wouldn't ramble. I'm sorry. One thing about the Soccer in the Streets program is that it is focused on positive youth development. And through that team and physical activity, it promotes a healthy lifestyle and the families are a part of that. And to that end, you're probably wondering how soccer and gardening came together. When everything shut down in 2020, it was really heavy on our hearts to what we would be able to do for the kids. And when programming was shut down, we, we took it personally and we were able to, through funders and supporters and partners, provide some hot meals and soccer balls to the kids that they could take home and keep active in those, in those times. Also, we had a couple of coaches that went out and planted some garden beds near one of the soccer fields. And it kind of grew literally from there. And that's when Garden FC was born. When the kids started coming back to practice and the coaches had vegetables for them and their families, it became not just an outlet for healthy and fresh food, but it also became a way for the kids to connect with what was important, being a part of, you know, growing the food, learning about the environment and being involved with their families. We had grandparents and parents and kids all working together, getting their hands in the soil and, and then watching things grow. So, when Councilman Gay invited us to come over to the Ward Four Community Garden, we were really excited to have that opportunity to expand Garden FC. And in the short time that we've been there since mid, mid-year last year, we've been able to garner some resources and build some garden beds. And now, we want to be a resource for the community, not just the kids and their families, but neighbors, friends, anyone who, you know, beginner, advanced, if you know a little about gardening or nothing about gardening, it's an opportunity to really get a nice, healthy outlet. And we also appreciate Councilman Gay's vision for this becoming an environmental education center and a beacon for the community, for the quality activity, the quality food and the beautification of the community. So, I am out there every mu, pretty much every Saturday morning. We invite you to come out. Maybe you can walk over and watch the kids playing soccer and enjoy that outlet as well. But it's really gratifying to me to see how we've been welcomed into College Park, particularly in Ward Four, in Phillips Park and the Ward Four Community Garden. And we're here to serve you. So, feel free to reach out and we'll do what we can to help make this a better place for everybody.
Just before we do our final comments, let me thank our sponsors, which is United Community Bank, Ms. Hunter, for sponsoring this event this evening. We really appreciate it. And Gen Care, awesome facility, primary care in these points. So, we want to thank them for, for supporting us. It's the fitness, Get Fitness Here? Come on, y'all ladies. This is an initiative that I ran into at the park and it's an amazing initiative. And excited to have this at our park. Good seeing you again.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shonda. I am the owner of Get Active Fitness. I have been a life coach and a fitness trainer for about six years now. My goal is to help you become a healthier you while making yourself a priority and not an option, trusting the process in the midst of it. The program that we will be starting up in April will be a fitness, fun workout. It is a family oriented workout. It is welcoming to the community, kids and adults. I encourage the kids and the adults to participate because in order to become a healthier adult, you have to be a healthy child first. So, we will start that up April the 1st. That is on a Saturday at 9:00 AM at Phillips Park. We will be doing this until August. It will be every Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00 and on Tuesdays at 6:30 PM. I'm super excited about this program. Like Councilman Gay stated, he ran into me at that park doing a workout with friends and families, and it just grew from there. So, I'm super excited about this program. I asked everyone to spread the word and just come out and enjoy fitness fun at the park. And I look forward to seeing each and every one of you guys very, very soon. Thank you.
I'm actually gonna take my last few minutes to thank also my family for always supporting Ward Four. First Lady Pamela Stone Gay, come on up and just, you don't have to talk, just stand up. Blake, come on, son. And Blake, Blake brought some of his good friends. Blake, you wanna introduce your friends real quick? Y'all don't have to speak, but I just want to acknowledge, these people have come to visit and support us, amazing. They're both attorneys, went to Columbia with Blake. I don't want to start naming people, but Rob, there you go, Rob. Rob is just, stand up, Rob. Rob is just bought land on Herschel Row. He's gonna be, how many condos, Rob? Tell them what you're gonna be doing, Rob. So, anyone else? So, as you can see, Ward Four is really diverse, you know? I'm gonna close by saying, you know, a lot of the core people, I call them my super Ward people, they come out for everything. And I understand the houses isn't packed, but people are watching this on our YouTube. But I, I'm here in the ward and we're working hard and it's, it's different. It's diverse. It's renters, it's apartments, it's our seniors, it's our newcomers. It's diverse. Trust me when I tell you, you have to be able to support all the different communities that have now came to Ward Four. We're a new community. It's changing, it's diverse. You have to go to them, you have to meet them out where they are. You can't take anything for granted. You can't assume that they don't support their community. Those women love their children more than any other body in any other communities. They love their schools. They want clean streets and we recognize this. And we're just continuing to be honored, very honored to, to, to support this community. I will tell you that some of you have said, come on, Councilman Gay, soccer and volleyball, what are you doing to us? So, we have a basketball court coming to Phillips Park in approximately, well, it'll start on this spring. It's the exact same size as the court over at the Hawks Court. So, we're excited about that. And we also have our program called Yard of the Month. Yard of the Month is where there's 24 streaks in our ward. 24 streaks is in Ward Four. And each street, there will be one winner per street. So, we're excited about bringing that program out, we'd like to see people sprucing their yard up. Thank you for the Finance Director, Ms. Athia, for taking her time for coming. She does an amazing, amazing job. Like she said, she came here to support her daughter who's about to be a physician assistant. She does amazing work. She's very fair, she's very balanced. So, we appreciate her leadership. That kind of concludes our meeting tonight. We're gonna meet the various people that are out in the lobby. Please take the food to go. I know I am. And thank you again for coming. God bless y'all and have a good night.